And Dan, we always check with Mr. Verizon to see what the time is. So it says that seven twenty-eight. I mean, six twenty-eight. Wishful thinking. Wishful thinking. It's so quiet. Yeah. Yeah. You can probably get it.
Are we close?
Yes.
Close enough for government. Like to bring this meeting to order.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yeah, I'm here.
Jamison?
Here.
Skid?
Present.
Zimmerman?
Here.
Mayor for the day Mayo?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Is that all?
That's all I've done.
I thought I was going to take the night off. City managers' report.
I don't know if you wanted to explain to the television audience who was that, who that was. And why he was in your seat.
That was Dan Mayo. He, periodically, we offer a fundraising bidding item called Mayor for a Day, and we offer it to various charitable organizations that are trying to raise money. The city, in their, it can't be said too much for the city how much they help it, but the city and I get together and we offer a tour of the city to the mayor for a day that won the bid. And it includes a tour of all the offices in the city, the water, water department, the wastewater treatment plant, which is the highlight of the tour. It really, it really is an interesting thing. And then, then we, the fire department and the, and the other city administrative offices. And then to top it off for the day, they go on a ride along with the sheriff. How was that, Dan? Was that?
It was one, it was excellent. It was excellent.
Good shot.
Very good professional tour of the police department and Todd, who gave me the...
That's good to hear. And then, then the cherry on the top is, he opens the regular council meeting and has us do the pledge. And we can't allow him to do anymore because I need to take over my job, and I can't. They would love that. They would love that. You know, what can I say? I did. I got a nap today, too. Thank you for that, Dan. Okay.
I'm still recovering from my former position as a city planner, so...
Dan, Dan has worked in city governments around the, around Oregon and Idaho and in various positions, notably a planner as a planner, so, so. And, and, and as a matter of fact, has started his civic career as a wastewater treatment plant operator. So he was able to talk with these fellows over here in their language. It was a good deal. Anyhow, on with the city manager's report.
Okay. I just had, one thing I wanted to report on, and that's, as we've announced, the, the city council approved a rate increase on water and sewer, and that's effective January 21st. And with that, we suspended the stage-two consumption penalties, which there was some confusion, I think, in the community. They thought all of the penalties and requirements went away, but none of the, all of the other ones are still there. There's still no vehicle washing, restaurants still need to only serve water on request, the hotel, those types of things are all still in effect. The only thing that's been suspended is the, the consumption penalty on usage.
That's correct. And, and we did that because the, our residents and users of the water are, are very, very judicious about conserving water. And it was felt that since they were, since they were conserving water at the rate they were, that, that we no longer need to penalize them, that they'll, they'll conserve. However, the caveat is that if the conservation efforts fall below twelve-and-a-half percent, those, those penalties go back on the water bill immediately. So it's, it's, it's an automatic thing. So we ask the community to join together and keep the, keep their conservation efforts forward until this drought is over.
Just one question on that for Brad. That is across the board, right, on the penalties?
Yeah, the consumption, all users.
All users. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. City Manager?
I just have a question about when the penalties get reinstated. Do we just go boom, they're reinstated? Or what do we do?
Well, it's going to take some time. This is actually a consent agenda item, so I was just notifying the, on the no-wash thing. So do you want to pull this?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Yeah. The, it's going to take us a little while for our system. It'll probably end up taking sixty days before we finally...
Okay, I'll pull it on the agenda then.
Okay. Oh, here we go next, is a solving conference and visitors bureau biennial report. Tracy Farhad.
Maybe we could have just the lights down a little bit behind you. Might be easier to see. Oh, well, that's too much. Okay, thank you.
That's for the mayor.
Is that the right direction? Okay, good evening. That is on purpose. That is correct. Just wanted to let you know. I am Tracy Farhad, Executive Director of the Solving Conference and Visitors Bureau, and with me tonight for our mid-year report is our CFO, Susan Williams, and our honorary board member, Dr. Ken Harwood, and team members Brenda Ball, our Digital Media Director, Sarah Brookshire, our new full-time Conference Services Liaison, introducing, and our new sales contractor, Greg Corso, who I'd like to say hello to you.
Hi. Greg Corso, I've been working with Tracy and the community for about ten years, last eight of which producing your visitor guide, and it was too good an opportunity not to come back and work with Tracy and all of you in our marketing and sales needs. We're working on online partnerships right now on the website, the Solvank CBB website, and Tracy has asked me to give her a hand with group sales, bringing groups midweek and upping that number and see what we can do. So I look forward to working with all of you and seeing you all throughout the town. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Well, we have handouts for you, for your reference, that are in your packets tonight and following the presentation, and we're open to any questions, of course, feedback, comments at any time. We've mixed up our report a little bit tonight to reflect on highlights of the last six months of marketing efforts. So first up, Brenda Ball, take it away with digital.
Thank you very much. As you know, we have a new website. The city was so gracious to provide us extra funds for a new website, which went live in July, and we're pleased to report that we're still the number-one most-visited tourism website in the entire San Yenés Valley. We've had that distinction since August of 2014, when we surpassed the Schumash Casino website, and we're doing what we can to keep those numbers up and growing. There's an awful lot of competition also with social media, as social media becomes more and more important. Here's some of our numbers. I just mentioned we're the number-one most-visited website. In the past six months, this is a report just from July 1st through December 31st, we had two, over two-hundred, two-hundred thirty thousand unique visits to our website. That's up four percent. I won't read all of them, but a few remarkable pieces there. As you're, I'm sure you're aware, mobile has just skyrocketed. The numbers have grown over two-hundred percent of the visits to our website from people using a mobile phone. And this is not to be mistaken for our app. We also have the Experience Solving app. As you've probably seen around town in the flowerpots, there's the QR code that goes directly to our Experience Solving app, and we've had part-time interns and part-time assistants who have been populating that and updating that, and we plan to have programs with that going forward. Social media, Twitter, you notice there we have thirty-six percent increase. Facebook, we only had a nine percent increase, but in my last report, we'd had an eighty-two percent increase. So it doesn't mean Facebook's going away, it's just that we put a huge effort in it the past six months prior to this, and we're enjoying those efforts now. Twitter, we also have solving meetings in Danish Village. We're reaching out to groups, meeting planners, to, as Greg mentioned, to bring people in during midweek. And the other piece is, we have a good open rate on our email blast. We send a monthly email blast to the public with approximately forty thousand people who are qualified leads. These are people who have requested information about solving. And we also send out periodically B2B e-newsletters to all the businesses and the civic leaders in solving about what's happening. If you're not getting those, you can go on our website. In the top left-hand corner, there's a link. You can fill out your information, and that way you'll be informed about all the things that we do and the events that are coming up. And my favorite piece there is that it's priceless, our return on investment. We're making very good use of the money that you've provided us, and we're returning an excellent return on investment. And I thank you for the opportunity to work for the city of solving. I enjoy my job immensely. I enjoy the challenge, and we have a great team to work with. Thank you very much.
Brenda, I'd like to tell them about the award.
Yes, I am so sorry. The most important piece, I forgot about. Let me backtrack here. Our website, we were very pleasantly surprised that our website won an award from HSMAI. It's the Hospitality Association, the International Hospitality Association. For, it's not a, a thing done in the corner. It's a huge organization, umbrella organization for hospitality industry, and our website won an award in digital marketing, and the awards are going to be presented in February and in New York City, and Tracy is going to go as our representative for the city of solving to receive that award. So not only will she receive the award, but she'll have an opportunity amongst a huge corporate group to market solving face-to-face.
And you know I will, so we're very excited about that. Thank you, Brenda. Well, this summer continued and started off with the launch of the Clean Air Express Saturday service between Santa Barbara and the San Yenés Valley. We partnered with SB CAG, Traffic Solutions, the county, Beelton CBB, and Visit the San Yenés Valley to bring visitors between our destinations. Go ahead, they don't need to hear me. Here's a brief overview video by Traffic Solutions.
Shopping, wonderful events that there are to do here in solving, and it's just a nice, easy way to be able to explore San Yenés Valley and be here in Little Denmark. It's pretty awesome. There are five wonderful museums that you can see here. We have authentic bakeries, five authentic Danish bakeries. Well, solving is always famous for its abelskiver. It's wonderful little pancake balls that are dripped in homemade raspberry jam and powdered sugar on top.
Transportation from Santa Barbara to here, Clean Express, it's seven dollars. It's awesome. And because when you come to solving, you don't have to drive it off. You can just stay here in the park and then enjoy wine tasting, olive oil tasting, lavender farms.
Or usually when we wine taste, we share a tasting, because we got to drive home. Up here, we just taste it for a little bit over the top, it's fine, because we get a bus ride home.
The bus is air-conditioned, it's comfortable. I don't have to do the drag down one fifty-four and worry about, you know, going around those curves. And I like the door-to-door service, you know, got dropped off right in front of the park, it was convenient, it was in the center of town, and it was accessible.
Great bus driver. Just took us there, we got there before we know it, we're in bed, coming home with a great school flight, and definitely will do it again.
It's more of the quote of business saying, take the bus and ego's riding to us.
We've been cross-promoting with agencies countywide and have a senior trip planned for Valentine's weekend. Writership has not taken off yet, although, although word of mouth is spreading. Brochures in your packet that we handed out tonight, and we're getting visitor inquiries about this alternative from international audiences as well, especially for the wine tasting in the valley, and continue to place both social media ads and postings. It needs more writers now to keep it running throughout the summer, so please keep spreading the good word. Next up, of course, were the Special Olympics World Games. Came with a magnitude of goodwill between Denmark and solving. PR and press coverage generated was excellent. In addition to the hundred volunteers and four days of events, including an athlete finding a long-lost cousin right here in solving, solving was called out during the opening ceremonies in front of tens of thousands of spectators and viewers on ESPN. Athletes went home and espoused solving's hospitality. This was an excellent show of community spirit and collaboration. We were very proud to be your partner as a host city. Now, solving was host to, also to five international site visits, also known as familiarization site tours, which is why we call them FAMs, this fall. In addition to China, twice, India and South Korea, Denmark came back to solving through our Atlantic Link and Visit California connections. We had eight tour operator product managers from the largest companies. They stayed two nights and toured the city and the environment, taking back recommendations to their traveling agents and products. Atlantic Link continues to show results on our behalf with an advertising value of half a million dollars and article readership of over twenty-two million people. The new SAS flight, by the way, between Stockholm and LAX with six weekly departures starting this spring is expecting to bring record numbers to the U.S. A new survey shows that Scandinavians are the highest-spending Europeans in California. Very handy, even with the switch with the dollar. Now, advertising. Advertising placement budget includes both traditional outlets and online media portals. Our partnership with Visit the San Yenés Valley, Mr. Shelby Sim is here in the audience, glad to be a part of this, has brought over 1.2 million print impressions and combined geographic behavioral and retargeting digital impressions of more than 12 million. So you see, your regional marketing investment continues to extend our solving message and then some. In other advertising news, we targeted Canada, as you can see up there, and New York City visitors through a Times Square video. And repeating last year's success on the Toronto path in front of a hundred thousand people per day was, is taking place right now this January for one month long. And you can see the numbers for that December fourteenth through twentieth, there were over a hundred and twenty spots seen through Times Square. Of course, at the time, the weather was spectacular in Times Square, so we're hoping now during the snowstorm, they're remembering all those great video images. Now, as, next as part of our new sales initiative, for that midweek offseason traveler, the CBB partnered with EOS Transportation to offer Santa Barbara cruise ship attendees a taste of solving. So here to report is our Conference Services Liaison, Ms. Sarah Brookshire. Sarah.
So as Tracy said, we've been working with Princess Cruise for this midweek and offseason sales. We offered a historical walking tour around solving to the buses. So with each bus, we offered a survey, and out of the seven-hundred-and-thirty-six people that were on the bus, we got two-hundred-and-thirty-one surveys back. So these are the results from those surveys. The first question that we asked is, will you return to solving? And eighty-four percent said yes, they would, and out of those that said no, it was simply because they had already been to solving a number of times. And then the, another question was total amount spent during their visit in solving. Eighty-eight percent spent ten to a hundred dollars, and the other twelve percent spent over a hundred dollars, even upwards to five hundred and more. And then the final question that we asked them was their total satisfaction with their trip to solving, and on a scale of one to five, five being the greatest. Eighty-six percent gave solving four or five stars, and those that rated three or two stars felt that their trip wasn't long enough and they didn't have enough time to spend in solving. And we didn't receive one star at all. And we received, received this great testimonial from a woman in Canada, and she said, "I find solving is such a pretty place. For sure, I would return with family and friends. Everyone here is so friendly, the place is clean, and just makes me feel good." So I thought that was nice. And then also, in addition to that, we, our visitor center staff reported on three separate occasions of groups returning to solving within two weeks of their visit after the ship had docked and they were off the cruise line, they returned for another visit. We are currently working with Princess Cruise for the 2016 Spring Tours. We had our first tour last week and currently have twenty-two tours scheduled until the end of April, and those dates will be in our next newsletter. And just a thank you to our tour guide, Dean, and, Dean and Heather Bedford, for giving the tours and all their many talents. Thank you.
Next, all right. Good press has continued to follow solving this year, kind of like a lucky penny. In addition to putting out twenty-one press releases, hosting thirty-three journalist visits, and assisting over two-hundred-and-forty-five media, we have also been named by numerous publications this year and travel portals on their top-ten lists. Here are some of the ones. And saw some direct results of having, over time, with our partners' efforts, enhanced perceptions about solving. In fact, last fall, Gabe Sagley on KTLA had the anchorman announce that it had changed his mind from solving being a one-night destination to a three-night, and have that announced on LA television is a very big score for us. We also want to give a shout-out to The Lansby, who has, is now on the top-ten best-new hotels from Galio, as well as Solving Bakery, who was on the Ellen DeGeneres Show this holiday season. So lots of good results coming around. That's all right. Almost there. Solving's Yule Fest showed improved results this year. On top of providing the community with some holiday cheer and a super parade, we had one-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifteen smiling souls that visited with Santa, while Fred Logman's Nisa cutout down in solving park, that was a huge hit, that drew heads in for their social media photo ops. And media efforts garnered a twenty-eight percent click-through rate on targeted keywords. So we didn't just go after this particular county or that market, we put in certain keywords and had a retargeting campaign. And we also had a twenty-nine percent increase year-over-year in unique visits to our website during December alone. That's a ten-thousand-person extra to our site. So the Holiday Wine and Beer Walk survey, and that's what we're showing here, of over two-hundred-ticket holders, revealed sixty-two percent stayed in hotel during that notoriously slow weekend, and with eighty-five percent having purchased wine and shopped in solving. That's huge to have them go back. Many a times, the, the tasting rooms don't think they're going to remember anything, how much do they pay attention, et cetera. They actually returned and purchased, so we were really happy about that. The only complaint, or the major complaint, I'd say, was not enough beer. So we're working on that for next year. And now we'd like to show you some testimonial videos. Brenda.
Oh, we think it's absolutely delightful here. Everyone is so friendly, so gracious and helpful and informational, and it's just a charming-looking town.
And the shops are great, and the restaurants are better, and the wine in the area is fantastic. So I'd encourage people to come this way.
I think one of the best things about solving is just being from the Los Angeles, it's just a really nice kept-secrecy California, just a really great stop and just to skip a lot of everyday lives and just sort of like have a nice relaxing day.
It's nearby, it's great to come here. It's been years since I've been here, and I'm looking forward to coming back. I'm so excited to be here, that's why I look around, shop around, it's a cute little area. I have so much to see and so much to learn.
Solving reminds me of its Small World at Disneyland, the happiest place on Earth. So this must be the second-best happiest place on Earth.
Yeah, I want to thank Dean Clicker for doing that videotaping, so it's nice to have unsolicited, but very free results. We want to thank to our partners. We have a lot, both in the industry and of common purpose, and we get to support each other for the greater good here. The CBB has taken on creating a crisis communication plan in case of a travel-related emergency, so we can get the word out to our travelers, and to assist the city and the visitors. Our crisis management team is working closely with the city clerk, Lisa Martin, the chamber and businesses to be prepared in case of a potentially bad press, El Nino and beyond. I also had the honor of presenting all things solving to the first Visit the San Yenés Valley Spirit of the Valley Customer Service Workshop just last week. Eleven of our staff attended, that important reminder of best practices on the front lines. There is a top-ten must-see-do solving flyer in your folders and on the backside are frequently asked questions. One of my favorites is windows solving open and closed, and we had to remind people that we're actually a city and we're here all times, but I am going to figure out how to put that gate at one end of town or the other. Maybe, maybe Mayor Mayo will help me with that one. So that was good. Last fall, the CBB spearheaded what's called, what I loosely call Tourism Talks, and basically it's a collaborative, monthly pow-wow get-together among our tourism professionals here to maximize our resources and to eliminate duplication. So we're talking, and it's working. And now with Greg Corso on board to help us book business midweek and offseason, going forward, our team of experienced professionals will continue to deliver results on your investment in solving's number-one industry. We know we love tourism, so thank you for your time tonight. Don't hesitate to ask for a copy of our reports or any clarification of our programs, and as usual, we are at your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Very well done. It's good news. You guys are doing just a wonderful job, you know, it's, all that publicity is wonderful. Next is public communications, written or verbal. At this time, please direct comments to the city council regarding consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers are limited to five minutes. I have one speaker slip from Fred Koval. I was gonna, I was gonna ask them to follow up last, because we want to go out with a good note, Fred, not with yours. I can hum. Fred Koval. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Fred Koval. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Just like a quick report on last week's Monday's ID one, number one, ID number one meeting. And yeah, they picked an approach for chromium six treatment. The cheapest approach was 4.6 million, and the MCF, the filtering, not the microfiltering, because, you know, we heard at the meeting on January the sixth, that the state could lower the level of chromium six to one part per million, or even zero parts per billion, excuse me. So that's what they picked. They talked about another 2 million for piping and senderies, about 8 million minimum. Now, originally, it could have been 12 million, and they said there would be a 55% increase in rates. But now, they've put on the table to resurrect the Institute, the ad valorem tax, which was $775,000. And, but they're allowed to go up to a million four now. But there was some talk that they might just keep it at 775. Okay, they got their rate study going, they've got their marching orders, and my crystal ball says they're going to be, have to do a 40% somehow. And of course, that'll be divided up. All right. Number two. When I look at, we passed a real opportunity a couple of weeks ago, I think, got lost in the dust. And that's to change the investment policy of this town. And an example was given, item five, associated with investing at 2%, $3 million. You have 4 million in unappropriated reserves. Put 3 million in and get 2% on your money. Doesn't seem that risky. All I can do is encourage you to look into that. The final, final item has to do with mortgages, like the mortgage state project water. What do you pay? You pay double. You pay the principal off, and you pay the interest. Yeah, it spreads it out over a longer period of time, say 20 years. However, in that time, you pay double for the payback. And not only do you involve the current rate payers, you involve the future rate payers. Holy cow, they got to pay off something that they weren't even around for. So I encourage you to avoid bonds. That's it. Thank you, Fred. Now here we come to the Patfields. Tanner and Elizabeth.
Good evening. My name is Tanner Patfield, and this is my sister Livy. We're both sixth graders at solving school, where we've had arts education since kindergarten. This is all provided by SAM, which means Self-Solving Arts and Music. SAM provides all of the dance, art, drama, and music that we have every day.
We're here tonight to thank the council for your donation of SAM. These programs mean so much to us. My arts classes are my favorite, because they give me a chance to be creative, to be myself, and to perform. I don't think I'd be very happy in school without them. Tonight, we're going to be singing a song by the name of "I Can't Help Falling in Love With You" by Elvis Presley. However, we are going to be doing it in the style of Twenty One Pilots. Lies may say, only fools rush in. But I can't help falling in love with you. Shall I stay? Would it be a sin? For I can't help falling in love with you. Like the river flows, surely to the sea. Darling, so we go. Some things are meant to be. Take my hand, take my whole life too. For I can't help falling in love with you. For I can't help falling in love with you.
That was great. That was, that was terrific. We're getting our money's worth out of that. There's no question about it. Our donation to the, to the school, it's, it does our heart good to see that kind of thing. Tanner, did you learn to play at the school, or what?
Well, I started taking lessons at the school, but this year, now that I'm in middle school, we've gotten to a very 20-year course.
That's fantastic. And Elizabeth, how about you?
I started taking lessons about two years ago, but other than that, I usually only do that at school. Now I have both lessons actively.
Oh, you have a beautiful voice. Thank you. Are you related to John Patfield? No? No?
It's cool to know him.
Yes, so do we.
He's a great guy.
He is. Well, thank you so much for performing before us. We appreciate that.
We appreciate your donation.
I have no other speaker slips. Does anyone else wish to speak now? Seeing none, we'll go on with the agenda to council comments and requests. Would you like to start, Mr. Zimmerman?
I want to thank everybody, staff, and everybody here at City of Solving for all their hard work and all their effort.
Have to be licensed, yeah. So we just want to make sure they know that they have to be licensed masseuses that are doing it.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That's all I have.
I have just a couple of words. I'd like to recognize Madee Dreyfus. She was on the, on the Mayor for a Day Tour with us, and it was a great joy to have you there. And Madee, we hope you enjoyed yourself. Thank you much.
And just to put a plug in for Madee's store, it is the best.
Oh, it is, yeah. And she stays open past nine, up to nine o'clock. She doesn't roll up the sidewalks early. This, this next information I have, I could hold back for the SB CAG committee report, but I won't. You know that we're, solving is developing a plan or a progress, a project for the bicycle pedestrian bridge over Alamo Pintato Creek. The bill is going to be estimated to be about $1.2 million. SB CAG has found some extra money because of savings in other projects, and has agreed to provide, to subsidize the 1.2 million by a $600,000 grant to City of Solving so that we can build that. It was, it was, it was well-received. I want to, I want to say that we'll be going ahead with the project, and it's, it's due to be completed in '17. Yeah. And we'll, and the bidding's going out shortly.
No, we're not going to be out to bid yet. We're, we're working, it's quite an interesting process with the, the bike trail structure, because it's a design special for Caltrans. So we're going through all the Sacramento design team, and it's going to be a little bit before we go out to bid. We have to get that approved first.
But the important, the important thing to understand is that it was with the county support and the SB CAG that the bridge is being, going to be built, and, and they're going to foot half the bill. It's the, the $600,000 comes out of the additional Measure A tax package that was passed a couple of years ago, so. And I have no other comments. Approval of the agenda, do we want to do any re-changing of the agenda? There's only one item on there.
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
You should do number seven first.
Onto the City Council minutes of January the 11th. Are there additions, corrections, deletions, or changes to the minutes? If not...
Well, she passed out some corrections and additions that I would like to have incorporated into the minutes.
I'll, I'll approve the amended. Amended minutes? Yeah. Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, pass. Onto the consent agenda. Is there any items here that anybody wishes to pull?
I'd like to pull item C, or no, E. No, what is it? E.
Which one?
Let me hold it over here for you, Johnny.
I think I need Newcastle.
E?
Yes, E.
Okay, if there's, if there's no other anything pulling, we'll, would you read item E, please, for the record?
Item E, adopt resolution 16 dash...
Do we need a staff reporter? Would you wish to comment?
I, I just want, Brad started to make some clarifications. I would just like the public to understand what we actually did.
Yeah, okay. So what, we've had several iterations of the Stage Two drought resolution, and Fred Koval was correct in pointing out that the last version that we had adopted had some incorrect penalty structure in it. So, so we, we've corrected that, but you've also asked that we suspend that penalty piece of the Stage Two drought ordinance. So, so consumers will be billed at the normal two-tier for residential, and, and commercial be as it, as it used to be at the new higher rate. But all of the other measures of the Stage Two drought are still in effect, as I, as I mentioned earlier. There, there's still no vehicle washing, the hotels are still supposed to put the notes on, on the wall, the doors about using the sheets and towels and those types of things, and then the no-water restroom. All of those are all still the same. And the daily watering, the two days a week with your even odd addresses, those are all still in effect. We're nowhere near out of the drought. But we have, the council has suspended the, the Stage Two consumption penalties until such time that we have a, an aggregate average across the, all the accounts of less than 12 and a half percent conservation from the 2013 year. And I, you were about to ask earlier how we would trigger that. I mean, we read our meters, you know, the 20th to the 23rd, roughly in there. Takes, takes about, you know, four or five days to get into billing cycle. So the other piece of that is, when we change our billing structure, we're going to go back to our old billing structure. So we will need our, Tyler's system people to redo the whole billing structure back. So it's going to probably take two billing, could take up to two billing cycles to get the penalties back in place, which would give people time to realize that that's coming again. But, but I think the request was, after one month, we instituted, I think from a staff level, we may have a little problem in getting that back in, because it's not, our billing structure has a lot of complexities to it, and so it's not just as simple as pushing a button and going back to the old, the old penalties. So it'll take a little bit of programming by our consultants. So, so it could take up to two billing cycles for the penalties to go back in place. I think that was the question.
Okay, so my, my question on that, then, is if, if it triggers on 12 and a half, what happens if 12 and a half is a fluke, for whatever reason, and subsequent months drop to 20, 25% reduction? Are we stuck with this penalty, or are we going to bring Tyler back in to redo the computers to get the billing system back to the way it is?
And how much does that all cost?
It was my thought that it would be on a month-by-month basis.
But it can't be.
It's two months, it'll be two months.
We can evaluate every month. It may take another cycle just to get it back in. We're trying to get them, and maybe Sandra can come up and clarify this a little bit. We're trying to get the codes in such that they could be implemented again, but that's going to take some programming. You want to clarify that, or?
I mean, it's basically what Brad said. So we're trying to figure out a way to save the current rate.
Mike.
Because it's a very complicated structure that they have to go back and look at 2013. They have to do some comparisons. They have to track who got penalties and who didn't. So I think we're just going to implement brand-new codes, so that those will still be saved, and we'll, they're going to help us with that, and we're going to do some testing to make sure it works. But I would ask that, it would take us probably two billing cycles. By the time we figure out that we haven't conserved, then we're already halfway into that billing cycle, and it wouldn't be fair to go back, you know, 10 days into the cycle and penalize people. So it will probably be, you know, we realize that the consumption at the end of the month, when we do the reads, is if it's not, if we haven't conserved the 12 and a half percent, then it would take us another month to notify everybody and let them know that the following billing cycle would have the new rates. And so we'd have to do it, it'd be like a month behind each time. So if you go down a month, it'll take another month to implement the rates without the penalty structure. So we can do it. It's just going to be a little...
Shifting it down, it'd be a delayed penalty, no?
Yeah. Yeah. Or likewise, it delayed back to the old rate, so.
But I think we, we're going to probably need a little direction, because there really wasn't a go-back. You know, the trigger is, it goes back in, the penalties come back on if they, they don't meet the 12 and a half. So, I mean, if the desire is to have that slide back, you know, up and down, up and down, then we probably would need to have that in the resolution clearly stated that...
Well, that's, that's a good thought, that, that it would go back automatically, and that at some time in the future, we could re-look, look at again at the penalties to see if it's worthwhile taking it off if the folks have gone back over, over next few, the following few months, and kept, kept the conservation in place. Did you understand what I meant?
Well, yeah. I think what you're saying is it would go in, and then you'd monitor it for a few months, and then the council could then direct, we could bring it back.
Right, to bring it back.
Say, okay, they've now, now they're back up at 13 or 15 or 20% consumption. Do you want to drop, suspend the penalties again?
The, the, the important thing to remember is that this is a community effort. Everyone in the community has got to conserve. And if some of, some folks aren't conserving, then they're going to penalize everybody. So it's, it's vital that they understand that, that this is on the backs of all of us who live in town, who use the water.
And I think from our standpoint, we're going to, we'll continually be reporting back how the, how the, the system-wide conservation is. So, so if it starts to tail off, maybe we'll see that. Now, it won't fix a one-month anomaly that you may have. You know, we're getting into the, the months where it's harder and harder to conserve, because it's not irrigation that you're trying to conserve. But, but I think, you know, people have done those, those major things and are conserving. But, yeah, so I mean, we can continue to report back to you, but there is that, that trigger mechanism. We really need to know if, if it's a trigger and done, or a trigger and then we're just pulling it back, so.
And I, I think that we won't have any problem. I think that the folks have shown that they can conserve, and they won't, just because the penalties go away, they'll keep on conserving. We're, that's our, that's our hope.
Is, is this a generalized penalty, or is it on a case-by-case basis?
System-wide. So the system-wide conservation would need to be below 12 and a half percent. But the penalties, then, would trigger for everyone.
Right.
Go back for all.
The penalties only apply to people who don't, users who don't meet the conservation goals.
Right, right. That, there's, there's setup.
So that would be case-by-case basis. So if the penalties, as there's, if the penalties come back in, someone who is meeting the conservation goal isn't going to have a penalty added to their water bill. It'll only be added to the people who aren't, aren't meeting the conservation goal based upon their, their particular 2013 use.
Okay, so this is an individual thing?
Penalties are individual, individually applied.
Well, yeah, once we set up the penalty, it's no, no different than it was the last bill you just got. If you were, if you were at 12, you had 10 at normal, at straight pay, and then you had two units at one and a half times. So that's, that same structure will go into place. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so if the system, if the system goes over 12 and a half, it goes 13, or goes, goes below 12 and a half, then penalties come in, and even, and someone in a higher category, in a penalty category, even though they have conserved significantly, they will still be penalized because they are back in the old, we're back in the old penalty route.
Well, recall that there is that, if you, there's the recession kind of tier, where you drop one back if you, if you did save over...
20% over.
Yeah, over, what was that?
20% over.
20% back, you drop back down. So it's the, the same structure that you have today, it's just the rate goes, the rate that it's based on will go up to the current rate. So, so it's not, I, I mean, I guess... rate. So, so it's not, I, I mean, I guess those same users, it's the same structure in right now. And we debated back and forth how that worked versus commercial, residential.
If we made a penalty now, and we end up having to go back on, and you're over, over using, you're going to get a penalty then.
Yeah.
That's right.
People who are following the rules aren't going to get penalized. People who aren't following the rules will get penalized.
We're, we're going to the, we're going to the two-year program without penalties. If we go back to the penalties, we'll go back to the five tiers. And those that violate those penalties, violate those parameters will be penalized, just like we did before. So there, so those of us who haven't, who, those of us who have conserved and haven't paid the penalty will continue not having to pay the penalty when it goes into effect again.
There, there are people, there were some of the rain bucket people that were still in penalty tier.
Yes.
Quite high in penalty tier, but they conserve significantly. I mean, the, the, the amount of units, some of these people conserved could have, could have served a lot of houses, even though they're still high-water users.
And so, because of the conservation, because of their conservation, we're taking the penalties off. We're just saying that, let's keep it up, pick up the good work, then we won't have to put them back on.
Let's bifurcate this thing, so I don't have to vote no on the whole consent agenda.
So, so Hans, another thing we could bring, when we're ready to reenact the penalties, we could bring those back, is to, do you want them to be at the same penalty? I mean, this resolution puts them in similar to what you had. We had quite a bit of debate when we set this penalty. We can do it again, I guess, but you remember, we had quite, there's always going to be some winners and some losers on it. You know, the higher users, you know, they're the higher users. So they, there needs to be some incentive for them to, to reduce. So even though, you know, a 100-unit house saves 20 units, which, which is great, it's two houses' worth of water, but they're still using 80. You know, it's still, they're a high user. So there, there needs to be a penalty tied to that, and that was the logic, I believe, when you set up the five tiers.
Did you want to vote on this item separately?
Yes.
Okay, because we can do that. Then, let's have a motion for the consent calendar, with the exception of item E.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We call the roll, please.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Skitt?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes. Now can I have a motion on item five easy?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there, yes, is there a second?
Okay, what, what is?
To approve item E. That's the motion. Item E being to adopt Resolution 16, 16, next in line, a revised Stage Two drought resolutions with penalties amended per the previous City Council action.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Okay.
To not approve, cassette item E.
Is there a second for the substitute motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Can we have discussion?
That we, that we not accept item five E.
Can we have discussion?
Yes. Discussion.
Okay, this is what we agreed to at our last meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you're just clarifying for us now how we're going to actually implement this.
Correct. We were asked to bring back the revised resolution that enacted what you had acted on, and clean up the language from the, the erroneous resolution.
So if we do not pass this, then we just go back to what we had before?
We'll have to go back to the original motion. If this motion, if the substitute motion...
No, 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 no. If we don't accept staff's recommendation, period.
If we do not accept the existing E.
Right, right. Then we just go back to...
Go back to the penalties.
We just go back to what we were doing before we started this discussion in our last meeting. Is that correct?
We will not, we will not pass these penalty changes, the penalty eliminations. We will continue with the current penalties that we have now. That's what we're saying.
That doesn't make sense, because it's the same thing.
We rate without penalty.
No, but this is the clean, this is the cleanup information here. This is the redo that we asked, to make sure that everything was the way we wanted it to be. And now, obviously, it's not the way that some of the council people want it, how they want it to read. So that means we're going to go back to what we had before.
There'll be no change to the penalty structure at all.
There'll be no change to the penalty structure.
But there will be a rate increase.
Right.
No, there won't be, no, there won't be.
No, there won't be. We're, we're going back to what it was, the origin, the rates, the rates before, without the, without any of the increases.
No, the rates aren't here.
The rates aren't in this. The only thing we're discussing here was the penalty structure.
We're not talking about rates, Hans.
That's right. So the rates are, the rates are in effect.
The rates are set.
I believe. Is that correct? The, the increased rates are in effect?
I'm actually trying to go back to the minutes to see what the action was last meeting.
I think we want to eliminate the penalties. We got the rate increase, we can't do anything about that, right? We're talking about the penalties?
Right.
So if there's only, the only thing we can resolve here is either penalties or no penalties?
Well, you can change the resolution. In the part of the resolution, it talks about the suspending it at 12 and a half, after a month of, of non-compliance. So that could be changed. So that, that would, the trigger mechanism for the, the penalties could be changed. Because the, I guess because the resolution talks about penalties, the penalties could theoretically be changed, if you chose to do that. So you've got some options on that. But the rate increase has, has been voted on and approved, and this resolution was just the penalty side of that. So, I mean, I guess I would interpret that the new rates would go in effect, and then you would have the penalties on them also.
If, if the substitute motion is passed, the rates, the rate increase will be in effect, and the penalties will stay on the rate increase.
Okay, it's on page five of the minutes. The first motion. Motion made by Mayor Richardson to eliminate the penalties. And then there was a recall.
Yeah, the recall was based on a second part of that staff report. Yeah, it looks like the, it was a 3-2 vote to eliminate the penalties until such time the conservation may fall between 12 percent, at which time penalties would be reinstated and raised, and to raise the water usage rates by 8.96 percent, water meter rates by 3.7, and sewer by 1.6. And that passed 3, 3-2 vote.
So, right now, the way I, the way I understand it is, we've increased the water rate, which we voted on, and we're trying to clean up how we put the penalties. And if we don't, the way I understand it, if we don't modify the penalties as we're discussing in item E, the penalty structure that is in current existence would be in effect. Is that, would that be correct?
You know, I think, the way I read this, is if you don't, if you don't take action on this resolution, the last positive action that you were, you took was to eliminate the penalties until such time as rates, conservation fell below 12 percent, and the rates were increased. So that's the last approved action on a majority vote of the council.
Okay, so what happens if the, the conservation rate drops between the 12 and a half percent? We said we're going to have a penalties. Now, what is that, what is the penalty structure we're going to utilize?
Well, your penalty structure, you didn't vote to change the penalty structure. You said to, to eliminate them until such time. And so that would, and that's how this resolution was written, to bring that back at the one, for residential, be one, one and a half, two, two and a half times the, the rate.
So if we don't do anything right now, and don't approve the E, as it's stated, that the penalty structure that would, is currently in existence, would remain in existence. So at that point in time, the, if, if we go up to the, we would have the higher penalty structure.
I disagree with that.
No, right now, you, you have, you've adopted a new rate of 8.96 percent, went up on the, on the usage, and you've eliminated the penalties, as long as it's suspended. It says eliminate in the minutes, but that's, it's a suspension when you say it's tied to a 30, or a certain conservation level. So that, so what would happen, I would envision, is if, if you don't make any motion on this, we, we will not have cleaned up the resolution, but your last action would still stand. And so, let's say we go three months down the road, they get to 12 percent, then the penalty structure would kick back in. That's the last direction of the council.
And it would be the existing penalty structure.
Yes.
So if we approve your motion, the substitute motion, the penalties will stay in effect?
I move to amend the substitute motion, that we eliminate the penalties.
I'm sorry?
I want to amend the substitute motion, and have no penalties.
Let's see, we can stack, we've stacked three motions on pile, on top of the pile. So the last substitute motion, we have, we'll, we'll take action with the first. And what is the motion?
To add to the substitute, that there, we, we eliminate all penalties.
Well, the maker of the substitute motion...
I'll, I'll, I'll agree to that.
Forever?
Wait a minute.
Forever and ever.
You're making a substitute motion on top of a substitute motion?
No, he's amending the substitute.
We're amending.
Are you amending the substitute motion? Okay, what is the, what is the amendment?
We, I would say that the, the council would have the opportunity to come back at some future date, if we find out that it's, it's gotten out of hand. It's just that I don't want this thing triggering on one event. That, that's my fear. A fluke, I don't know what it, what it would be, but a fluke. And I don't want to, I don't want that triggering penalties on down the road that we have to undo sometime. This is my, this is my problem. Now, if we, with, by council action, we can, if we see that the usage is going up, and that we're, that we're consistently not making the goal, then we can come back.
But you can't penalize retroactively.
No, you can't penalize retroactively.
But so you can see two or three months of...
Why don't we say that? Why don't we say that we're going to review this in three months, or four months, the penalties, and see how we're doing? Instead of, instead of having, all of a sudden, whoop, it's going to go up again, whoop, it's going to go down again.
Exactly. It's a roller coaster. Or if it, once it's implemented, then we're penalized forever until somebody comes along and stops it, even if we do fall, or we, we do go above the conservation. It, it works both ways.
So why don't we just say that we want to review the penalties in four months?
Well, if we do it that way...
The lack of penalties.
If we do it that way, it can be two or three months before we can enact a penalty because of the time lag. If we, if we say, if we say that in, in February, the conservation method was 10 percent, then we'd say, oh, oh, we got it. Would this be an abnormal, would this be an abnormal condition? Then in March, we have another 10 percent. It's not abnormal. There's a trend. And so by the time you install the penalty, you've got three or four months down the line where you're, where you're not conserving, more than likely, if it's a trend that's started.
If, if, if the language in this had been such, that instead of one month triggering it, if, if it were, say, three months triggering it, I would have supported that. But I won't support on one month. It's, it's, there's too, too much opportunity for a fluke in one month.
Here's, here's some of the reasoning that I, that I believe in. If there's not a hammer hanging over, and a three-month term is not a hammer, hanging over the fact that we must conserve, we're in a drought, and it's vital that we conserve, we conserve water. And I don't think that we can take time to find out if we're conserving or not. If we're not conserving, if the folks in the community decided that, that penalties are off, game's over, that's, they have to go back to conserving again. It's not, it's not a good method. I think that, that if they, if the penalty, if the conservation rate falls below half, the penalty should go back on, period.
Why don't we take into consideration how much we've over-conserved, and reward for it, and get rid of the penalties?
We, we have, we're giving consideration. That's why we took the penalties off in the first place. It's because these folks are doing a great job conserving the water. All we're doing is, is we're putting in a, a flag that says, if you don't, then you're going to suffer the penalties again. Because some folks may just disregard the fact that we're in a drought, and it's not a good idea. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Substitute motion is, is that we do not approve measure, item five easy.
No, it was amended.
It was amended with...
To, to remove.
Remove penalties.
All penalties.
And so that's, that's what's on the...
So, yeah.
I would interpret that to be...
Essentially, item two of the resolution would be eliminated.
So I, I would interpret that amendment to mean, approve Resolution 16, next in order, amended to remove penalties.
Remove the penalties, yeah.
Does everybody understand the motion?
I want to make sure that's usage penalties, because we have two types of penalties. There's also penalties for violating other drought regulations.
Only, only usage, yeah. Only usage.
Does everybody understand the motion?
Neil, is that good with you?
Call the question.
So there's a motion, but who seconded it?
I made it. Neil.
He amended.
Then Neil amended, and I okayed. But it's still my motion.
Okay, so where's the second?
Second is Neil.
Neil seconded.
No, he amended.
He seconded the original substitute.
Did you second it also?
Okay, then I have, then I have to...
Everybody has to agree.
Okay. You made the motion.
Yeah.
I seconded the motion.
Right.
He made, amended the motion, you accepted the amendment, but I have not accepted the amendment.
Right.
And I'm not accepting the amendment.
Okay, here we go. Like I said, I'm really glad I pulled this.
Is there, is there a...
Did I get a second?
Would you, the amendment is going to die for lack of a second.
Okay, then try it again.
Okay. Tried, okay, I'll, I'll try the...
Incorporating his.
His, okay. I'll, I'll make the motion. I will...
Are you going to eliminate, you're going to delete this, the...
I'll make a substitute emotion.
Other substitute.
Okay. Substitute emotion. Get the title right.
I'm for.
That, God, where the hell are we?
As, as I understand it, the motion, the substitute motion would be to adopt Resolution 16, next in order, with the amendment that the usage penalties are removed, and that there is no reinstitution provision. So which, which...
Yeah, if you just say with item two eliminated, that takes out the usage penalty.
Yeah, okay, item two.
And it takes out the trigger, yeah. Takes out the trigger and the usage penalty.
Yeah, we're, we're taking the trigger out.
Correct, and the penalties.
And the penalties.
So if you were to reenact it, you would have to reenact the penalties in whatever form they would be. Yeah.
Okay. The motion is, so we understand it.
The motion is to approve Resolution 16, next in order, with, is it section two or paragraph two?
Section two, number two.
Number, section number two, removed, so the others would be renumbered?
Yes.
The effect of that...
Is section number two. We're talking about mandatory temporary penalties?
Yeah. The number two in that is the penalties.
Are we talking about, where in the resolution?
In the resolution. Number one talks about mandatory temporary reduction, and number two talks about penalties that will be charged.
Taking out number two.
Two.
And renumbering the rest.
So then three becomes two.
Right. Effectively, and this isn't part of the motion, but effectively, if you do that, what that does is it removes the usage penalties, and leaves all the other enforced, the, all the other state mandated drought rules in, in, in place and effect. And so usage penalties could only be imposed with a subsequent resolution based upon a majority vote of the council at whatever point in time that would be. There would be no automatic jump.
Right. Yeah, yeah. And, and I just want to put that out there real loudly, that yes, we can do this, if somebody screws up, and we use way too much water. somebody screws up and we use way too much water. I'd, I'd like to give the people a chance, so.
Okay, I'll second the motion if somebody else hasn't already.
It's been moved and seconded?
I call for the question, quick.
The double substitute.
This is the first, this is the substitute motion we're discussing. If this motion fails, we'll go back to the original motion, so, okay, so the first, so can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Jamison?
Yes.
Skid?
No.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
No. That vote, that motion passed three to two, so there will be no penalties. And I, I hope we don't have this same discussion when we have to put penalties back on, because it, let's hope we don't have to.
And we'll continue to bring you conservation numbers each council meeting.
Thank you.
I would, I would hope we don't have to bring it back, Jim.
I, I don't, I don't think we will.
And I don't think we will either, but I, I just, I just want the people of solving to know that we trust that they will do the right thing without a hammer over top of them.
Item six.
Item six, approve mid-year budget adjustments, amending the 2015-2016 fiscal year budget.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson, City Council members. Sandra Featherson, your Director of Administrative Services. I'm here to provide information and request approval of mid-year budget adjustments for the fiscal year 2015-2016. In your packet, I've outlined the adjustments that we are requesting. We have a couple revenue adjustments. One is to the transit occupancy tax. We do anticipate a little higher numbers than we originally budgeted, so we are requesting an increase of one hundred and sixteen thousand. We are also requesting for the expense side, I'll just kind of highlight some of the adjustments on the budget. In the general fund, we are looking to, there's a couple different things. One is in Parks and Recreation and Public Works. We had originally budgeted for the purchase of a new backhoe as part of the budget process, but I did not incorporate the, into the budget, the proceeds from the sale of the old backhoe. So there's an adjustment doing that, and that will help allay some of the cost, because we do anticipate selling the old backhoe, and so we'll use a portion of those proceeds to offset the cost of the new one. In all the departments, I'm increasing the amount in the insurance category. With the JPIA, they give us an amount for the liability insurance every year, and it's a little bit complicated, and there's an amount that we have to pay for those retroactive adjustments, and I've come to council before on those, but this year I misread the amount for the refund, is what they call it, that we have to apply. So in essence, we have a bigger charge for insurance that I was anticipating, and that was my error, so this is an adjustment to do a correction on that.
That's a large sum of money, too, isn't it?
It's about forty thousand.
Forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. That's more than, that's more than half of what the original cost was, because the original cost was eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy.
That's correct.
Okay.
Other requests for increases, we are anticipating for the council and administration, additional education costs with our hire of the city clerk, there's some additional training needed there. We are looking to purchase a new projector for city council meetings, as well as chairs to be used for city council. We are increasing the amount, we did not budget in the, in the account called Audio Systems account for a monthly internet fee, so we're, that's about thirteen dollars a month, so we, I'm just putting that in the budget, so we remember.
Can you explain that, what that means?
Yes, we pay a monthly fee, just like homeowners for Comcast, and so we have a fee that we pay, it's about thirteen ninety-five a month for Comcast cable. And then we are also requesting an increase in the temp agency expenses due to the recruitment for an office assistant position, so while that position was open with the retirement of our previous employee, we incurred temp expenses to cover that front desk. So some of that will be offset by the fact that we had salary savings on the career employee, so we're hoping that'll be a wash. In the Planning, Building and Economic Development Department, we are requesting an increase to professional services due to the cost for noise monitoring. That was to monitor noise, I believe, at the concrete plant. In Parks and Recreation, we are increasing the supplies budget for the purchase of new chairs, we're increasing the supplies budget for solving park, increasing the small equipment budget for Sunny Fields, there was a break-in a few months ago, and so they need to replace that equipment. And we're increasing the projects budget due to some additional enforcing costs with the installation of that storage facility over there.
Couldn't, on the, on the break-in and the theft, couldn't insurance cover some of that, or?
Yeah, our deductible is much higher than what we lost, so it's all out of pocket.
All right.
On the public works engineering side, we're asking for an increase in the budget for membership dues for professional organizations, increasing the budget for some vehicle repairs and maintenance, I believe on one of the trucks, and it increased the budget for professional services because of a scanning project. They're scanning a bunch of old files, and so they needed additional funds for that. In public works maintenance, the refrigerator broke down in the vets hall, so we had to do a replacement there. There was a roof leak in city hall, and then also, we are creating a budget, both on the revenue and the expense side, for the potential fire station remodel. So this was just for preliminary design costs, and we wanted to show that in the budget, but those costs are being offset, the Schumash are paying for those, so it's a wash, it's an in and an out, but we, you'll see a budget adjustment in there to show the budget for the revenue coming in from them and the expense going out for those preliminary costs. On the road side, we are increasing the budget for some small equipment and for sidewalk grinding, and then in the street tree department, we're increasing the budget for safety gear, we had new employee in maintenance and for street tree management. In the Skid Mesa LLMD account, we increased the repairs and maintenance costs, they had a sprinkler problem there, so they needed some additional funds to fix that. And then on the water and wastewater fund, you'll see a few things, again, related to the backhoe sale, so it affects that department as well. We are increasing the budget for additional costs relating to accepting the credit cards online. As you might recall, there's a forty-dollar fee for accepting those per month, so we're just increasing the budget for that cost. There's some additional studies that they're going to be doing in the wastewater treatment plant, the arc flash and capacity analysis. They're increasing the amount for the Percolation Pond Bank Restoration Project, because there were some additional regulatory requirements in how much of the area that had to be re-landscaped, so Matt asked for that additional. We are reducing the budget for the purchased water and the state water payments based on the current projections, as well as the upland and river well development projects, and those we brought back to you actually at the last meeting as we were talking about the water fund. So we incorporated those into this budget request. And then for transit, they're requesting additional monies for marketing and advertising and for professional services for that. The council could choose to reject the amendments or not approve them. In terms of the fiscal impact, as I mentioned on the water, water fund, by reducing those costs, it's almost a million dollars that we're going to return back to the water fund. So I'm hopeful that that will help, in addition to any additional cost savings that we have in the water fund, that we might end up, you know, not utilizing all of our reserves at the end of this year. I've done a summary in the packet of all the adjustments, and so I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions to the staff report?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the, the council chairs. Okay, so there was a projector involved in that, twenty-six hundred dollars, too, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not paying five hundred and twenty bucks a chair?
No.
No, I think they were two forty, two hundred and forty dollars.
Okay. So it's an expensive projector.
Yeah, actually, the projector, I believe, is sixteen hundred. We're on our third projector in the last five years, so we're trying to upsize and hopefully get one that lasts a little longer.
Get a really good one that'll last for ten?
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody, somebody showed me a good one. So are, are you questioning whether we should purchase chairs or not?
You know, I was thinking, I'll probably be uncomfortable no matter what I sit in. So I'll just get up and wander around every once in a while.
That's fair.
Either that, or that one of the staff has that big round ball that she sits on that is supposed to be very comfortable.
Yeah, it'd be real fun watching me roll off of that, Jim.
Hey, give us some energy.
Are, as, we can, I can ask a question now, do we agree we want chairs? Yes or no?
They, they don't work. They don't work easily. They're a pain in the fanny.
The chairs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm, actually, I'm satisfied with these myself, I, I'll go. Well, can I, can I?
I think you deserve comfortable chairs.
How, how do you feel?
I just hope the new chairs are comfortable, two hundred and fifty dollars, I don't know, I don't know if, it's not, that's not a lot of money. A, a good chair maybe might be more like a thousand dollars.
It might not be a good chair either for two fifty.
Twelve hundred, but two fifty, hopefully they're better than these.
We go over to Staples and try out their chairs.
You know, the way, the way I see it, I've sat in these chairs down here, and they're really comfortable. So Jim likes his chair, we just swap out the other four and we're home.
There you go. Yeah, we'll get, we'll get, put these down, that's a wonderful idea.
We, we could purchase one as a test, and everyone could try it, that's an option.
Could we wait till Black Friday and Staples sales?
I, I believe your new clerk did a pretty good job of whittling that price down. She was looking at the thousand-dollar range and came, got them down, down to two forty, but it's not a thousand-dollar chair.
Oh. It looks like we're going to get new chairs.
As long as three of you say you are, you are.
Looks like. Okay, is there any other questions to staff report?
Yeah, the purchased water, what, what was that? What purchased water is that? Went from one-one to seven-fifty.
That's the additional water we may have needed to purchase due to the drought, and we had identified a certain amount, as well as the amount for the suspended Table A, and that doesn't look like that payment's going to be due this fiscal year, so we were able to reduce that amount.
Okay. And then.
It's, it's, it should be noted that while we're reducing the expense in this fiscal year, the seven hundred thousand will come in the next fiscal year, so we're just moving it down the fiscal years, so.
And then a question on just the stuff that went from zero to something, and that would be the capital equipment from wastewater, water, and also general fund. What exactly are those? They're all like fifteen grand, thirty grand.
So that is, that's related to the purchase of the backhoe, and we had originally identified it in the budget as part of, we have a category called equipment replacement, but that is an amount we use every single year, we budget a certain amount to go into the pool. And when I did the budget this year, I lumped both the equipment replacement and the expense for the current year for the backhoe into one category. So basically, this budget adjustment is to pull it out of capital, out of the equipment replacement amount, because we want to manage that and keep track of that separately, and put it into capital equipment to show that it's a one-time, one-year, you know, one-year expense. So that's basically a rebudget of that item.
Okay.
So are you saying the backhoe's costing about twenty thousand?
I wish, but no. We anticipate the backhoe to cost about a hundred and thirty thousand, I think it came in right at like one-twenty-nine.
Yeah, and it's split across a bunch of funds, so that's why you see the, the smaller amounts.
And then what about the, the parks, the gender, special service, yeah, how come it went from zero to fifteen, or fourteen thousand?
We have an employee who's been out on workers' comp, so we've hired a temporary service that's, that's doing our maintenance, our restroom custodial work.
Okay.
Any other questions to staff report?
What kind of backhoe are you getting?
It's outback, it's a John Deere.
Oh, okay.
Take a look at it.
I like green.
Got it about a, maybe a month and a half ago, yeah.
Can we go play with it?
Yellow, okay, well.
I got a backyard.
This is not red.
A lot of Mahindra.
With, with no other questions, staff, we'll go to the public for comment and have a comment slip from Fred Koval.
Well, I hate to say, but you've taken all of the wind out of my sail. I've got very much to say, except.
Thank you for that public comment, Fred.
I didn't hear, maybe I wasn't listening, but the decrease in the upland well development, eighty thousand less? Did I hear anything as to why that's eighty thousand less?
We're going to have about eighty thousand less than we anticipated this year in expenses for that project, so it'll, once again, it'll get moved to the next fiscal year.
Connect the two wells together.
These are the river wells, they're not connected. These are the, was it the upland wells or their wells?
It's upland well development.
Yeah, that's the, the anticipated cost to develop the well in HGA that we're working on right now. We anticipate it's going to be eighty thousand less than the original budget.
Well, that's really good news. Sounds like the huge chunk of money is going to go back in. Good, good, that's all I had.
Thank you, Fred.
I thought he was going to ask for a chair.
It's probably the shortest one ever, Fred.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Does anybody want to discuss it, or can I have a motion accepting the?
I saw, I saw moved.
Second. Second and a half.
It's been moved and seconded, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Jamison?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes. That passed with a five-o. On to council member reports, does anybody else have any besides me?
I'll just back up everything Fred said with ID one, it was all accurate. At the beginning of the meeting, he talked about ID one stuff, and it was all accurate. I was at that meeting.
And from a, a meeting setup standpoint, just so you know, your, your Schumash City Ad-Hoc Committee is meeting February third, and our ID one city meeting is attempting to meet in the second week of February.
Is it when?
The second week of February, we're trying to coordinate dates.
I'll, I'll be out of town the second week of February.
You're not in that meeting.
I know, well, no, we're talking about the financial thing.
We'll set something up sooner for that.
Brad, was that nine fifteen, did you ever?
Nine fifteen.
I believe it was nine fifteen on, on the, oh, no.
I'll tell you.
I have it noted here in my fucking wagon.
Pretty sure it was nine fifteen at the tribal hall.
I saw it, I just don't remember.
Old age is nasty, isn't it?
I can't find my pen to write anything down, so.
Meet with the Schumash Ad-Hoc Committee, oh, nine fifteen at the rez.
Okay.
Okay, then for committee reports, I'm on two committees this month for reporting Air Pollution Control District. The significant thing on that is that we, we had a termination of employment by the executive director, and his replacement was there and acted upon. Let's see, there was something that was, oh, we, we received a, a report on the air monitoring network in Santa Barbara County, and it pointed out the number of monitoring stations and the standards that they were set to, and it indicated that, that the standard is being lowered from seventy-five parts per billion for particulate, no, it was aux, to seventy parts per billion, and that's because the trending has been downward from, for the last several years, and so the standard is moving down with the trend, and so be prepared. SB CAG, I, I was replaced on, as chair by Supervisor Janet Wolf, she's now the chair of SB CAG. And of course, the, the important thing was our pedestrian bridge support was for the six hundred thousand dollars. And there was a discussion on the Highway one-on-one corridor update, and the, the plan on, on widening the bridges in Carpinteria. There are three bridges that have to be widened, and they, it's going to take a couple of years to widen all three before the one-on-one can be widened beneath it. And they've developed a plan to reroute traffic during construction, being that Carp is divided by the freeway, people, it's necessary for people to get back and forth across, and they've set up, I believe it was a seven-stage plan, if I remember, remember correctly, to transit the freeway during bridge construction. And then we had a report by the lobbyist about the new, new bill that passed Congress.